We're joined tonight by Brittany Steltner as well as our new student board representatives, Emma Feld and McKenna Kidwell will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the meeting to order. Roll.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Dr. Hoida.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Widman.
Here.
Dr. Gase.
Here. Adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman. Roll call.
Discussion here.
Discussion.
I don't know if I could amend it or I would just ask, is there any way that we could take either a moment of silence or anything in memory of Pat Hilmer? She died just before our last board meeting and wasn't recognized, so I think it'd be good that we did recognize her in some way.
Yeah, we had planned on that, but that's, that's fine. It's a good time. So Pat Hilmer, I believe, served 12 years on Tiffin City School Board of Education and was pretty much a pillar amongst the education community in Tiffin, Ohio, and served at the Tiffin Seneca Public Library for quite a few years as well. And those who knew her, she was very witty, and of course, as often happens, we, you know, with people with British accents are always impressive, I think, anyway. So, yeah, Pat was a very wonderful woman, and she's sorely missed by the education Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Widman.
Yes.
Dr. Hoida.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes. Go right to board reports. I believe most of our committee meetings were canceled for the month of July. I know business advisor is canceled, finance committee, Mr. Perez. Program committee.
Did not meet.
Did not meet. Support services.
Did not meet.
Dr. Hoida did not meet. Personnel and records committee did not meet. Legislative liaison, do you have anything, Mr. Perez?
Yes, briefly, the budget bill was signed this week, and it did adopt the governor's idea of going with the wellness funding. In terms of how it actually affects the district, I believe superintendent's in a better position to address that. There was also a change in high school graduation requirements. I think they touted that it would cut some of the testing, and I believe would cut us down to two tests for high school students. It won't affect the lower grade testing, which is, I think, something that we, we would want, but at this point, that's all I have to report.
Do you have any other comments?
Just that, that, really, the, the general fund is pretty much flat across the state from that perspective, but there are some wellness dollars that the governor has issued for different districts, and in those, those wellness dollars, those, those funds are to be spent on non-academic barriers for students, things like social work, things like PACs, things like McKinney-Vento. So we'll have lots of opportunities to be able to, 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 to work with many of our community agencies to be able to spend those dollars in a, in a way that'll impact our students in a positive manner.
It was quite a sum of money, too, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, it ended up, I think, I think 5.6% of our, of our budget was the increase.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Mr. Perez? Okay, thank you. Vanguard Sentinel, any updates?
Did not meet. Everything's going good.
The PK-5 Task Force, we did have a trip to Greenville. We'll be talking later on about that, so I don't think there's anything else needs to be addressed right now, is there? Okay. And the student representatives are just being introduced, so we'll have a superintendent's report there.
Okay, we, we would like to start with having Brittany Steltner come up, and we are very excited to have her with us this evening. When we had graduation in May, Brittany was still studying abroad over in Brazil, where she spent a good portion of her senior year, and she worked very, very hard to, to, with the rotary in order to make that happen, and we look forward to hearing a little bit about that in a little bit, but Brittany, we are so proud of you, and it is our honor to bestow this diploma to you, and congratulations for being a graduate of Tiffin, Columbian, and now and alone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for recognizing me at this meeting. I didn't expect to get, not a diploma, but a graduation ceremony because of the fact that I was in Brazil for my senior year, so to have this opportunity to be here at this time and to receive my diploma formally, I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to have our student board reps for the 2019-20 school year please come up. That would be Emma Feld and McKenna Kidwell. And these particular students went through a thorough round of interviews with, with some of our board members, and I could maybe let Dr. Gase talk a little bit about that process.
Yeah, so we have, we had four applicants this year, and it was tough to make the decision, but I think McKenna in particular added some interesting insights into something that the students would look forward to embracing, such as a difference in cafeteria delivery of services. You might say a word or two.
I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, but, well, I don't really know what to say, but I just want to say thank you, because this is a great opportunity and a really eye-opening experience for me.
Very good, thank you. Emma couldn't, couldn't be here this evening?
I, no, she couldn't.
Yeah, okay. Well, she was, Emma was, she was a student who's transferred over from Tiffin Calvert Schools, and so they, they both had a different take on, past students have been representative, so I'm looking forward to working with you guys. All right, thank you.
While we're on recognitions, we have two of our staff members at this time we would like to recognize for their retirements and their service to our district. First, we'd like to recognize Mr. Don Schwartz. Don, Don has been a, a member and has served the Tiffin City Schools since 2003, starting as a night custodian at Columbian. In 2006, Don was promoted to the head custodian at Lincoln, and then relocated at Kraut as the head custodian, and his principal, Mr. Bill Beeston, is also here tonight. He's always serving the needs of both the staff and the students with a smile. Don will be remembered as a caring, compassionate employee who enjoyed his work. He looks forward to spending more time with his grandkids and may work part-time after taking a couple of months off. Don, on behalf of the Tiffin City Schools, we wish you the best in retirement, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Don.
I guess I would just like to thank Tiffin City Schools for opportunity to give me a job in midlife crisis, since I've lost one of my jobs due to plant closure. Thank you very much. It's been a great pleasure to work with the kids. I love the kids and stuff, and I'm really going to miss the kids and the staff. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Jan Beer, our food service supervisor. And we have been lucky enough to have Jan employed by Tiffin City Schools since 1988, where she began as a head, a department head in the food service department. In 1993, Jan accepted the position as food service secretary, and then worked her way through the organization, and in 1999, she was promoted as the food service supervisor. During her time with Tiffin City Schools, Jan has efficiently fulfilled the nutritional needs of, of all of our students at every age level, along with our staff, and beginning and ending each day with a smile. Jan will be remembered as a caring and compassionate employee who enjoyed working with everyone in the Tiffin community. We wish Jan the best in her retirement from the Tiffin City Schools, as she plans to spend more time with her grandkids and enjoy her hobbies. Jan's new motto is "Every day is a Saturday." Thank you, Jan, we really appreciate you.
Thanks, Jan. Thanks, Jan. So, so one thing that I wanted to mention, that Jan left a pretty sizable surplus in the budget, too, so.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone, the board, administrators, my family, my brother made a special trip from Columbus, my staff, I've got past and present here. Thank you, ladies, for all the hard work, and I'm going to enjoy myself, but I appreciate the opportunity these last 31 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have invited Mr. David Zach from TSEP and some representatives from the NPR group, who are going to talk a little bit about a, a project that they are hoping to, to get our support with in Tiffin Point 2. I believe I, David has come and spoke with the finance committee and has had some, some questions that we went, went ahead and I forwarded in the board update this, this particular week from that perspective, but at this point, we want to turn it over to David and his group to deliver a presentation, and then we can have some, some questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Board of Education. It's a pleasure to be here again, to be with people passionate about education of our young people and the future workforce, as well as the future changemakers and people who are going to become part of our community and make it great. I'm going to be uncharacteristically non-epic this evening, as I was told, that I gave, I give epic presentations, but that, the reason for that is I usually believe in what I'm talking about, and so I like to, to tell the good story. What I'm excited about tonight is we continue to work on developing a better process and a better way of facilitating. Our mission at the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership is to facilitate projects, and that means to help companies say yes to a project, and once they say yes, to make it easier to go through that process, and I've been working with the school board since last year, and how do we improve getting you more information and giving you more time to digest that information and be able to take questions and answer those questions? Today is part of that process. We're not looking for any kind of decision today. About a, you know, week or so, I've given you some of the answers to the questions and recently. We've been fortunate enough to have the availability of two key project managers with the NRP Group to talk about their business and talk about this project, so that you can get more information, get to know them and this project more in detail, as well as give you the opportunity to ask them questions, because I know whether it's been in finance committee or in other discussions, I've, I've given you my best representation, but sometimes it's great to be able to, to have that kind of direct connect. So I'm excited tonight as we continue to work together, and we work to develop a process that better fits your expectations, so you can have the answers you need and the information you need to feel like you're doing the proper due diligence and, and being able to make the best educated decision, pun intended, for the Tiffin City School District. So without further ado, we have here, I'm going to recognize Andrew Kalnitzky, who's here, and Scott Skinner also. Scott is going to be making the presentation on behalf of the NRP Group in Cleveland, and I'm going to pass out some handouts, so you don't have to take notes, you have this as well, but it might be good to be able to jot notes along with the slides, so I'm going to hand these out to you. Our letter of support, just FYI, is also at the very back page, so. Without further ado, Scott, if you'll let me pass these out, then, then head into it.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, thank you for having us. Like David mentioned, my name is Scott Skinner. I work in development with the NRP Group. I wanted to start by just saying congratulations to the faculty awardees and the student awardees and, and graduates. It's a tough act to follow and really exciting stuff. I also want to echo what David started saying, just that we at the NRP Group really appreciate the work that you do and the goals that you are trying to achieve. I'm actually a former teacher myself, so what you folks are doing is something that is very near and dear to my heart. So on to the NRP Group. For those of you that don't know us, we are a national multifamily development firm. We've been around about 25 years. While we are a national firm, we are based in Cleveland here in Ohio, and our roots really are in Ohio, specifically in affordable housing. There we go. So you can see here that we're a fully integrated company, fully vertically integrated company, and basically what that means is we do real estate development, construction, and property management. What that means for this project and what that means to you is that because we also run our own property management company, we are involved in this project for the life cycle of the development. It's a minimum 15 years, most likely 30-year commitment, that we ourselves will be managing this project to make sure that it is maintained to the utmost quality and it meets our, as well of the state of Ohio's standards. So this is just a little bit of information about us. You have a bunch of numbers there and statistics. We have 33,000, 33,500 units developed in 15 states. We currently have about 17,000 units under management. That's a mix of affordable workforce housing and market rate housing. While our market rate business has expanded in the last few years, our roots really are in the affordable housing world. For the first 15 or 20 years of our, of our company's history, we primarily just did workforce affordable housing, mostly here in the Midwest, expanding into Texas after a little while. But here's just kind of a broad overview of our business. And I also wanted to take an opportunity to show you a little bit of what our product looks like when we built it. So I don't know if all or any of you have had an opportunity to go out to Tiffin Point Residences, the first phase of this project, and take a look. That is something that we're very proud of and is indicative of what we try to build nationally. So you can see here, here's some examples. On the top left is a project in Columbus, Ohio called The Residences at Career Gateway, in which we partnered with Nationwide Children's Hospital to develop 58 units of workforce housing. You'll also see a couple of projects in San Antonio and Austin, Texas. This is just to give you an idea of what we're building. When we say affordable housing or workforce housing, sometimes that can have negative connotations to, to it, but we really, as a company, take pride in what we build and in what we're bringing to communities like Tiffin. So this is just a image of statistics around the affordable housing crisis in the country. This is not news to any, anyone, this is something that is widely talked about, but affordable housing is at a crisis point in areas around the country, urban, suburban, rural, and everywhere in between. You can kind of see here just the, that no state actually has an adequate supply of affordable renting, affordable rental housing for the lowest-income renters. And here's a little, little bit of information on Ohio specifically. I want to specifically point to a number in the bottom left-hand corner there. In the state of Ohio, it requires 1.8 full-time jobs at a minimum wage to afford a two-bedroom, two-bedroom rental home at market rate prices in Ohio. Now, again, that's spread across the entire state, but again, like I mentioned earlier, in both urban and rural and everywhere in between, in all of these communities, affordable housing is at a crisis point, and we, as a company, are doing our best to provide communities like yours with quality affordable housing for its residents. Here's Tiffin 1. So again, I'm not sure if anyone has had an opportunity to go, to go actually see this development, but it is 52 units, two, three, and four-bedroom apartments. It is, as of right now, fully leased, which to us indicates that there is a strong demand for even more affordable units coming to the market. We have a community center, fitness center, business center, which is made up of several computers and printers for our residents to use at their leisure, as well as a playground and actually a pet, a pet washing station. We pulled a little bit of data on these projects for this meeting and found out that 27 school-age children are actually living in the development right now, and that six specifically have moved to Tiffin from outside of the community. I don't have any information on what schools specifically they're in, but those are school-age children living fairly close to here. And this is what we are very happy to bring to you for the second phase of this Tiffin project. So David didn't mention, I'm sure all of you are aware, this project was actually already awarded funding by the Ohio Housing Finance Authority, so we are moving forward, full steam ahead on this project. We are very excited that it was awarded funding, and we are very excited to actually get this process moving, construct these buildings, and bring these units to Tiffin. So just a brief overview, 60 total units, a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. We can actually leverage the existing resources that we put into the first phase of Tiffin, the community room, the playground, all of those items. It consists of units anywhere from 30% to 60% of the area median income. So that's units that are affordable to folks that are making 30% to 60% of the area median income. For context, that is, are, for Tiffin 2, rents are anywhere from about $300 a month for a one-bedroom, all the way up to about $820 a month for a three-bedroom. That's kind of the minimum and maximum and the range that you're getting in there. The financing consists of conventional debt, so that's just a loan taken out from, from one of our lenders, tax credit equity. I'm happy to go into more detail with this if, if, if you would like, but it's, it's a complex process. We secure low-income housing tax credits, that covers an equity portion of the steal, and through tax abatement, which is part of what we're here to talk about. I wanted to give you a little bit of idea of what you're looking at as well, what the actual development and site layout is going to look like. So this is just an image of what the site is going to look like. You can see the Phase 1, which is already completed and, like I mentioned, fully leased on the left-hand side of your screen, and the Phase 2 is on the right-hand side of that image right there. In the middle, you can see the playground, playground, where new playground equipment is going in, and one thing that we love about this, this space specifically is that there is plenty of kind of common green space for our residents to enjoy, to make it a more, more walkable, livable community. A couple just kind of points to, to note on the side there. So part of the Qualified Allocation Plan, which is what we use to apply for these tax credits to finance affordable housing, requires community support. We were very happy to have community support on, on Tiffin Phase 1. On Phase 2, this tax abatement acts as a form of that community support, and the tax abatement is a very key component. Like I mentioned previously, we are in this for the long haul, so this is not just something we are going to develop, construct, and then leave and let someone else manage. We are owning these things for 15 to 30 years, so it, we are incentivized, it is in our best interest to take care of them, to make sure that they, that the quality is maintained and to make sure that our residents are enjoying the actual property. The market study predicts, that I'll show a little more information about in a second, that within six months of opening this development, it will be at 95% occupancy, which is basically fully leased. Again, just showing that we believe, and we have data to back it up, that there's sufficient and strong demand for affordable housing like, units like this in the, in the community. The Tiffin Housing Opportunity Assessment is something that I got from, from David Zach, and it has a couple of key data points about just kind of the Tiffin market specifically as well. So the Tiffin market represents one of the most underserved markets in northwest Ohio. A market clearly exists for all types of housing throughout the Tiffin area, including multifamily, which is what this is, and because housing development over the past few decades has been limited or not tested, it makes a lot of developers apprehensive sometimes to, to come into this market, but we believe in this market, we're excited to be here, we're excited to, to, to provide this product, and we are hoping that we will be the first, or not the first, but we will be one of the first movers to a pattern of successful development that is established moving forward. And this is the last slide, and then I will turn it over for questions. I'm happy to get more in the weeds with this if you would like, but this is part of why we are asking for this, this, this tax abatement specifically. So the, how tax credits are awarded in Ohio, it is based off of a point system, and the difference between getting awarded and not getting awarded is often fractions of one point. It's based on a complex set of metrics, and the tax abatement, as you can see here, contributes directly to these tie-breaking points. This isn't the first time that we've applied for financing with this second phase of Tiffin. We've applied for it one or two times before and did not receive it. It was this tax abatement that really pushed it over the edge in terms of competitiveness for receiving these credits in order to finance this, this property. You can see on your left, basically, it is 4.35 is what the final tiebreaker score was. Projects that aren't awarded may have tiebreaker scores of 4.27 or 4.2. It is that close, as they're kind of parsing these things out, and the actual tax abatement contributes directly to some of these metrics that get us over that edge, that get us those tiebreaker points to, to build it. So that's just, again, I'm happy to go into a little bit more detail if you'd like, but this is just kind of how the, how the actual awards get decided, and just kind of letting you know why this tax abatement was so absolutely critical to, to it happening. So I'm going to wrap up there and answer any questions that you have, but just wanted to reiterate again, we, as a company, are very, very excited about this development, about this development. We were incredibly enthusiastic when we found out it was funded, and we think it's going to be a great project that the community needs and that will add tremendous value to the community. So that's all that I have formally for you. Happy to answer any questions.
Just, this is all federal funds you're going after?
Yes, so how, these are low-income housing tax credits. Federal, the, the mechanics are complicated. The federal government allocates these tax credits to state governments. State governments then write what's called a Qualified Allocation Plan, what I was mentioning, and that basically tells developers like us what those states' priorities are and how they evaluate affordable housing units. We then apply to the state of Ohio, to an agency called OFA, it's the Ohio Housing Finance Authority, for these credits, and that's, that's how the financing kind of filters through us. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, yes, thank you. And then is there any other way that they gauge community acceptance or community support?
Sure, there's a number of ways that they gauge community support. They, there's letters that you can get from different community entities. However, the tax abatement wasn't purely a community support play or a community support mechanism, it really was for adjusting the financing of the project.
Really, I mean, what percentage of the whole total, the total cost is the tax abatement?
Off the top of my head, I honestly am, am not entirely sure. It's pretty small, yes, but it's.
Almost minuscule, you might say.
Sure, it, it is small, but.
And the other question I had is, do you have any other method for abating taxes to show the city's support, as in going to the city for income tax relief or something along that line?
I honestly wasn't, and I wasn't working on this project at its inception, when NRP would have gone to the city.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not saying this one, any of your projects, anywhere else.
We.
Is there, are there other methods by which you would get community support, other than, than asking schools to give up money?
There are other methods, just quite frankly, it's, it's rare that that happens, and it's something that I believe that we, that we attempted to, to do on this project. That kind of city support is very hard to come by and very difficult to actually achieve.
I found the same thing, too. Thank you.
Could you help me go through the, the numbers under Tiffin 2 there?
Under here?
Yeah, like the TDC, I assume that means the Total Developmental Cost.
That is correct.
So you got about nine and a half million.
Mm-hmm.
And then credit requested, is that the tax credits from?
That is. That is.
Okay. And then you get your Maximum Credit Request. That's, that's how much you could have requested?
Correct.
Okay. And the mortgage, what's the NRSF? I missed that part, I guess.
Net rental square feet. So that is the, the number of square feet that are rentable square feet, so the square feet that are in the actual units of the project.
All right. So your construction costs are 100 and, what are they, $140 a square foot, or?
I'm not sure exactly where you're looking.
Well, if-
Oh, you're just, you're, you're doing, you're doing the math. Sure, possibly. I can't, I'm not, not as quick as you on the math, off the top of my head.
I guess I'm trying to, to total-
Sure.
To the total developmental cost, or how you're getting to the 9.4, 9.4 million.
Sure. So hard costs aren't the only part of development. There are significant, what we call soft costs, which are kind of development-related costs that go into it. That's legal, accounting, you know, running our business, all of that. What I do want to turn your attention to, though, is the bottom part of, of the sheet. So these are the tiebreaker points that I'm talking about specifically. So the Total Development Cost per Net Rentable Square Feet, the Credits Per Unit, Total Development Cost Per Unit, and the First Mortgage and Deferred Fee, those are all metrics that the tax abatement here contributes to and lifts us up, and lifts us up in it a little bit.
So the reason I can't get those numbers to add up is because they don't?
It's because they don't. It's not a, it's not a complete picture of the project.
I understand why I don't understand that. And again, the, the total tax deferment or, that would be coming from your real estate taxes?
Mm-hmm.
What is the total over the 15 years? Is that up there?
That is not up there. That's a number that I can, I can, I can get to you offline, but that, that's not up there right now.
All right.
And that's not, and I can get to you offline, because frankly, off the top of my head, I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Okay. The, at times, different, different groups will come to us and, and request us to support the tax abatement.
Mm-hmm.
And it'd be a, a company coming in, or different businesses.
Sure.
In this particular one, the development will actually increase the need for us to hire teachers.
Okay.
While at the same time, not providing any revenue to us.
Sure.
And as you pointed out earlier in your slides, there were, currently, were there 27-
27s, right.
-school-age students there. And I didn't know if that was something you took into consideration when you made the request.
Sure. Can I ask a question? And you guys are the experts, I don't know this. More children coming into the school district, there's dollar values attached to those students? Is that correct? So I, I think that would contribute to revenue for, for the school itself. I, I don't know if it would require more teachers to be hired. I, I just don't know. But we do feel, I, I can say, that there is non-quantifiable value that this project brings to the community, and we at NRP personally feel that that, that is, is significant.
I think you're referring to the state portion of funding for schools?
I, I, this isn't my area of expertise. I'm in over my head.
What, 50% roughly? 50% of the state funds, we, we fund the rest, roughly?
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a net drain on, on our, our system.
Okay.
I, I think we discussed in Finance Committee, though, we, that was one of my first questions, is how many students would we be adding on in terms of our responsibility. And I think what they indicated at the committee meeting is that most of those children were already in our district and are just moving to different houses. So their kids were already serving, that's why I was kind of, the, the number that I think I was interested in, I think was the six.
The six.
The six. And we don't know where they came from, open enrollment, or they would have just met the school age. And the questions I have are, in terms of these developments, have you had any that have gone past the 15 years? And if so, what happens? Do you guys just sell them, or do you keep managing them?
Sure. So there's a variety of things that can happen after the 15 years. What normally happens, what are, and I, I can't speak to the, what happens 15 years from now, but what we do 95% of the time with our developments is we, like, basically re-up for another 15 years of credit. So we're, in reality, we're holding on to the property, we're managing it directly ourselves for 30 years.
And then your incentive is a development fee upfront, correct?
Our, our incentive is a development fee upfront, yes.
Are you getting a lot of turnover at the current point, the first part?
I don't have that data off the, with me right now. I'm hap, I can give you my, my contact information, I'm actually happy to provide that. But I can say, in our, in our, in our workforce housing, in our affordable housing developments across the country, and especially in Ohio, because the need is so great, and because there are so many folks who need quality, affordable rental housing, we don't generally see a ton of turnover. It's, it's usually less than our market rate product.
Do you have any information on about appreciation of value to these units in 15 years? Do you find the next 15 years, is there a sizable appreciation? Because I know some of these developments tend to depreciate over time.
Sure.
Because they're not managed all that well.
I, I don't. I-
Because that would really be interesting to us, because-
To see if the, if the land appreciates in value over time?
If you're getting any return on this.
Sure. That's-
And I could know that.
That's very possible. I honestly don't know. I, I can say that the poorly managing, management, poor management problem is not something that we, that we have and that we see generally.
Do you have any estimate as to what the fair market value of this project's going to be at completion?
At completion? I don't, off the top of-
That's, that's the number we need to be concerned about.
David, if you have that?
So in working with the auditor, we got a sense of what the, we, we don't know what this is going to be, but we can look at it. Phase 2, it's somewhat equivalent, there's some additional. So in looking at the buildings, and I can send this specifically after, the value was, it's either somewhere between 2.2 and 2.5 million in terms of what it's on the auditor's books for. And, and those taxes that Julie Atkins calculated ended up being 585,000, if, with the assumptions, not including depreciation, not including time value of money. That'll be, for the first, you know, at that rate, it's 585,000 over the course, you know, evenly over the course of 15 years. And then, you know, either appreciation or depreciation based on what's going on for the next 15 years after that. So again, I, I submitted to you the tax number, but I'll submit the other numbers that Julie had provided behind that.
David, on, on Phase 1, the, we gave up 50% for 10 years, that, that was, now does that continue on then, on, on the next 15 years, or will you receive revenue from Phase 1?
No, this does not affect Phase 1. Separate, complete deal, so yes.
You mentioned the possible renewal of the credit after 15-
Yes.
-years. Would, assuming NRP was still involved in that, would you be back to us in 15 years asking for another 15-year, 100% abatement?
Most likely not. NRP would still be involved in that. I, again, it's, I can't speak to 15 years from now.
So under state law, it is not possible to abate existing value. So this is only on, you know, it's, it's an improvement in the real estate value. So you can't, you can't abate or exempt existing property that's paying taxes. So it will be statutorily impossible to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I understand that you've already received approval to, to move forward through, from the Ohio Housing Authority?
We have, yes. So we've been awarded these tax credits from the Ohio Housing Finance Authority with the application that we submitted with the financing structure as is.
So with all the approval already given, what do you need from us?
We need official sign-off and approval of this actual abatement.
So my math is about $40,000 a year. And I'm rounding up to 600,000, about $40,000 is what we're looking at as a loss. Assuming 100% abatement over 15 years, at a, and I, I'm just using 585,000. David, I took your number and I, I bumped it to six, just as a-
Sure.
I understand it's an estimate, 2.2 to 2.5, I'm not holding anybody to that, but I just took 600,000 and divided by 15, and came up with $40,000 a year. That's, that's lawyer math, as opposed to finance math.
But to be fair, though, if they don't build it, it's, it's a loss of zero, because we don't, we don't see it unless they actually build it.
Yeah, no, I'm not-
That's right.
Yeah, and I'm not making any comment on the propriety, propriety of the project. I'm just trying to figure out what our loss is going to be, given the best numbers that we have, understanding those are not cast in stone. Just trying to get, get an idea of what our, our revenue loss would be.
Sure.
Versus no abatement at all. All right. That, that's all I-
So I think, to be fair, though, I think he's saying that if he doesn't get the abatement, they don't, they don't win that tiebreaker, that it's not going to be funded this year.
That is absolutely correct.
So our loss will still be a zero?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Zach, I have a question. In terms of what was just referenced, I think in the newspapers, in terms of the housing study for Tiffin, what if anything, does this, where does this fit in that? Or can you answer that?
So we have need, I, I can't give you the exact fit. Nick, you may or may not have that at the ready, but, you know, we provided the study as far as, like, exactly. I don't have the numbers in my head. I have a copy of the study, but I don't, I, I can't tell you. There is a need for this. There's basically, of all the, the housing that was available, affordable and not, two units were available in the city of Tiffin. So, you know, occupancy for rental was at a, you know, all-time low. That I, that I can tell you. I don't, that may not suffice. We'll take a deep, we'll be happy to take a deeper dive and try to give you a more articulate response.
The, I, I guess the worst-case scenario would be, we approve, you build, the students come, and they all open and roll out. Right? That's the worst-case scenario, that they build it. The students come and they open and roll out, because that is direct out of our pipeline.
That's a doubleheader at that point. You have a doubleheader at that point.
No, that's not it. You're, you're forgetting the fact that if they do come, we still fund 50% without the money. We only get 50% reimbursement. We still have to hire a teacher at full price. We can't hire a teacher at half price.
But the worst-case scenario was they don't come to us.
No.
They go somewhere else, and then we have to pay-
Well, no, if they go somewhere else, yeah, we, we pay them the same fund, but that's, that's a zero, that's a zero.
Oh, no. Yeah, we paid the full share for them to leave.
If it's a charge.
But hopefully, we won't have to bust them there.
That's just not going to happen.
But, I mean, that's the worst-case scenario.
Yep. We're going to be a destination, just, those kids, too.
Yeah.
David, when are you needing, I presume there's paperwork and things that have to be done on this, when do you need a decision from the board?
It can be, it can be a few months. I'll let the company address. Construction in the spring, but as far as the-
That's correct.
So it's not a, not a mad rush.
Okay. I'm very grateful for the time to think about this. I want to, I want to thank all of you very much. Obviously, we've had a couple of similar issues where we've been asking, we've been asked for abatement. This is very nice to be able to read this material ahead of time, get a flavor for what's going on, read the numbers, even if I don't understand all the acronyms, hear the explanation, get the questions answered. This is the way this should be done, and I appreciate that from, from all of you very much. Thank you.
I know some organizations will, in lieu of taxes, they'll make a donation. Is that something NPR has considered, or NRP has considered?
I, I can't speak to that. I would have to go back to NRP headquarters and inquire. But I, in this case, I don't believe so yet, but again, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
It's a good project.
Thank you.
There is no payment in lieu of taxes on this type of, of proposal, like we've had, David, I'm addressing this, I get, I think to you more than anybody. We, we've had some issues before with the actual commercial development, where there's been a payment in lieu of taxes. That is not factored into this program, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Right, right, Dean, this is abatement, those are tips. So those are, this is-
I, I get it. I was using it as an analogy. I understand it's not the same program.
If I might, I wanted to add one comment, and again, we'll come up with a maybe written more articulate response to Dr. Gase's questioning about the ability of cities. Some municipalities control the, have their own electric utilities and control the gas utility, and also the building department, so there are opportunities to abate fees. So none of those situations exist, for example, here in this community, to do something that's kind of non-traditional. So just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Dr. Gase, that concludes the superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barber. We'll move on to Mr. Boz, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. Since our last meeting, we had a few resignations staffing-wise, and for your consideration this evening, and pending your approval, we will have those positions filled. I want to, you know, give credit to our building administrators, or, you know, I wouldn't say scrambling, but anytime you get a resignation this late in the year, it can be worrisome, but we are excited about the new staff members we're going to bring on board. We want to welcome them to the TC fam, TCS family, again, pending your approval tonight. And we're looking, looking really solid in the staffing area. I, I would say that our, our main focus right now is to find a food service director. And I know that Mr. Daniels, of course, Mr. Trisler are going to be working on initial interviews here very soon. Going to be some, some big shoes to fill with Mrs. Beard leaving, and we just hope that we can find a quality candidate. Assistant AD interviews have, have started already, and Mr. Trisler and Mr. Hartsel have been working on that as well. So we hope to have someone to the board next month there. And then finally, we're, we're still looking for that speech and language pathologist. You know, specialty areas, very difficult to find a quality candidate that, that's going to fit into, to our school district. And I know Mrs. Hill is working diligently to get that taken care of as quickly as possible. So, and the other item I have tonight is I just want to wish best of luck to all of our fair exhibitors. It's Fair Week, Senate County Fair, and we have several students throughout the district that are showing their final projects that they've been working hard on all year, maybe through 4H or different club organizations. And we just want to wish them the best of luck this week in their, their exhibitions. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, Bob, the speech and language, is that a full time job then?
That is a full time, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Boz?
Go to you or the superintendent, but I was asked by one of our volunteer coaches, in terms of the non-paid volunteer coaches, they were wondering, is there any way that there's either a group or the school district or somebody that could pick up the cost for the background checks? Because I think they volunteer their time for no pay for the district, but then they, I think, they fee $75 to do the background checks on top of the classes that they have to do, so.
I'll certainly look into that and take it under consideration. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Scotty, operations.
Summer cleaning update, they're doing very well. They're all down to maybe a classroom or two to do, plus their hallways. So they should be wrapped up that first week of August, so the teachers can start prepping their rooms for the year. It'll make teachers happy, custodians happy when they're done, and traffic flow works very well. Track update, the track got started today. They laid the pole vault runway today, and they'll be doing the D-section of the high jump tomorrow. So Thursday or Friday, we'll start the front stretch, and you'll be able to see the alternating colors go down on the track.
So the board race will be end of the week, then?
No, the track won't be quite ready that fast.
Next week, yeah. All right.
Weather permitting, perfect weather, they work seven days a week on a project. They don't leave. And perfect weather, they could do it in three weeks, they said.
So they bring all those bricks over from-
Heidenberg, yep. And hopefully, they go away faster than they did for Heidenberg. Any questions about the track, or for me?
Okay, thank you very much, Scotty. Moving on to the opportunity for the public to address the board. Anyone who wants to address the board may do so, come to the podium. address the board. Anyone who wants to address the board may do so. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have a three minutes to discuss, or to, to bring any topic to the board if you'd like. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item 8.01, you need to approve the minutes from June's board meeting.
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, let's, let's just put them all together.
Or you're going through them.
Yeah, we'll put them all together, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I've done this before.
Item 8.02, approve the treasurer's report for June. Item 8.03 is employment of a number of people. Item 8.04, donations and grants.
Dr. Gase, 8.04 is at the bottom of page five, tournament site agreements.
Oh, there we go. You changed it on me. So, 8.04 is tournament site agreements, and 8.05 then is donations and grants. Now, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. To the action items, item 9.01, approve the revised board policies.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman. Discussion.
I have just one, one question. Do we have a district policy for tardiness?
Your microphone's off, Jeff.
Do we have a district policy for tardiness? I know it's been a problem in some of our buildings, and it hasn't been addressed. I went to the OD website, and there's nothing there. They have truancy, but not tardiness. So, as a board, can we discuss something and make something, or do, can we not do that?
As long as we follow the rules of House Bill 410, which now don't really delineate absence with tardiness, it's just the hours a, a student misses in a specific period of time.
But here, here's what my consideration is, and I think we really need to consider this. When a student is absent, that affects one student. When a student is tardy, that affects the rest of the students in the classroom, when they're getting that classroom ready to start a day, or if they're in the middle of something. So, I think it's something, it's not just about 10 minutes here, 15 minutes there. It's about the starting and the restarting of that classroom when a person is tardy. Whereas if a student's not there, you're not restarting the classroom. If they're gone the whole day or gone until lunch, you don't restart your classroom. But if they're 15 minutes late or 20 minutes late, maybe 30, 40, 50, 60 times a year, you don't meet the total hours, but yet you're restarting your classroom 30, 40, 50, 60 times a year. I think it's something we need to be proactive about and address.
On, on that issue, is it that widespread? We bus the majority of our kids up to K5, so are they all just missing the buses? Are buses running late, or is it just a few?
I would probably assume that, that Dr. Hoida is talking about a small, a smaller group. I don't think that we have a widespread absence or, or tardy problem.
But the point you may be missing is, it may be one person in that classroom, but that then means it's 22 people or 23 others. Okay? It's only one person, but the other 22 or 23 are affected by it. Where in absence, they're not. And that's what, it's not a big percentage, but when you start putting, when you start adding it up, you add a dollar a million times, you got a million dollars. That's something bigger than just a dollar. So, I think it's something we need to address.
Might be a good discussion in program committee at some point.
Could it be something that, not necessarily a policy, though? Could we have a procedure in place, say, such as after so many tardiness episodes, to get a social worker involved?
And I think, I think Mr. Henry was wise about that. I think what we can do is refer to his committee, but I think you also refer to our attorneys to come up with an opinion as to what options are. Because, again, the state's set attendance at hours, and what we can or can't do is limited by state law. So, we can't just start coming up with rules and then, you know.
Yeah, I tend, I, I really would choose to look at it from the standpoint of, if the child's showing up late, there's a problem. I mean, so, you got to look at where the problem is. And so, if you can get, maybe after so many tardy episodes, the social worker involved, or somebody that's trained in that type of investigative process, go after that, as opposed to making a policy that's going to saddle us with something we have to do. Yeah. Whereas, if we do our own proactive intervention, then we, we don't need to be worried about conflicting with House Bill 410.
And just so you know, our, our new social worker has been doing that. I know Ms. Tuitt has been doing that. And so, it's just identifying where that, and I think that's what's something the superintendent's been doing, is adding those social workers to address that issue.
All right. I think we were at the...
Yeah. Call the question.
The vote, 9.01.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.02 is approve the contract with Frontline Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.03 is approve the contract with North Central Ohio Education Service Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman. Discussion. This is to rent the room at Noble. Is that right? Yeah. And, roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.03, approve the contract with North Central Ohio Education Service Center for the bus to Cedar Point.
So moved.
That should be 9.4.
Yeah, what, there's 29, 29.0, I was going to say, I thought I said it right. There's the 9.04, yeah. Okay. So moved, motion by Henry?
Second.
Second by Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.05 is approve the contract with Joseph Moore International Cultural Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.06 is approve the agreement with PT Services Rehabilitation Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.07, approve the real estate purchase agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.08 is approve algebra and geometry textbooks and journals, along with support materials.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 9.09, approve pupil activity permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.10, approve the partnership agreement with Seneca County Youth Center and North Central Ohio Education Service Center.
So moved.
Second.
The motions, Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 9.11, ratify the 2019, 2020 school bus stops.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 9.12, approve the transportation agreement with Tiffin Service Cab Company.
So moved.
Second.
The motions, Henry, second Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 9.13, approve the agreement for speaking engagement and/or training.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion by Henry, second by Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Moving on, item 10, opportunity for the public to dialogue with the board. We chose a topic of the pre-K5 building proposal.
Yes. And, you know, with that, just to sort of give, give a preview, last, last Thursday, a group of us from our, our pre-K5 task force took a trip to Greenville and had an opportunity to look at a building, just from a standpoint of, of, of similarity, from a standpoint where the, where the building sits on, on 62 acres, and we have the ability now to, to put a building on, on, on 82 acres. The building serves roughly about 1,700 students, and the building was sort of divided as a K, a K through 5 on one side, and a 6, 7, 8 on the other, with some common, some common areas, very large common areas that were, we felt like very functional. Large cafeteria, large gyms, large swing space areas from that particular point, multiple playgrounds, just, just very, very well done. We went there to, to get some, some ideas and took some pictures, just to show some folks. And I think that, that what we really decided that we would like to do is to take a group of teachers to Greenville sometime this fall to actually see the building, the usage when, when classes are in session. And then for, for those teachers also to get a, a, a very, very visual opportunity to examine room sizes and, and, and look at, at this particular building. But we felt it was very well done. Design of the building had, you know, traffic for parent drop-off in the front of the building, the buses in, in the rear. I mean, we'll just show you some, some opportunities. And as, as you enter the building, there's actually, actually like two sides where the parents would enter offices. The one side, as I look at this photo on the right, would be the, the, the elementary side, and then on the left would be the, the middle school side. And we, we kind of look at, looked at this building almost as a, a pre-K 2 and then a 3, 4, 5, from the different layout. Building was, was very well designed and very, very top quality. Torazo flooring everywhere. A lot of the, the brick and mortar from the outside was, was dropped in the inside. You could see, see the hallways. And as we talk about things like Torazo and, and single, single seam roofs, they are much more expensive. However, they last forever. And, you know, I, I know that we've been working very hard with our committee in, in, in trying to make some, some really good choices as we go to our voters for the first time. These are like areas at the end of the building, and as you could see on the right, those are actually two classrooms that have flexible, flexible walls from that perspective. So, those, those areas can be open, and you can actually have three classrooms collaborate at one particular time with that open space. And I think a picture a little bit later here will capture that better. You know, just, again, it, very, very well thought out. Even, even the stairwells, when you take, take a look at the steps, the stairwells had, had visual, visual, or holes in there to give you a visual, so you could see somebody in, it was there behind the stairwell. In that particular, very well thought out. This is, this is a view of that flexible class space. Pretty much all the desks are, are mobile, so very easily be able to, to move, so students can collaborate and different classrooms can collaborate together. Science rooms, you know, again, very clean, very well done, lots of storage, lots of space. Flooring, very, very easily maintained from that perspective. And again, the storage in, in, actually in the elementaries, there's built-in cubbies for the students in all the classrooms. Lots of, lots of, of, of design. And this particular building is a one-to-one building, so the students do have technology, but there's also rooms for labs, especially for the courses that utilize technology for, for that particular classroom. Media centers, very well lit, a very good blend of flexible space, technology, and then, of course, the traditional literature. This would be a, a look at a concession stand in, in the, off of one of the gym areas, where that, and, and something else that they, they did in this particular building is, is there's not necessarily large teacher, teacher work or dining areas. They had about eight of them, very smaller in pods. Again, this is the concession stand from that perspective. Locker rooms. This is just a look at some outdoor seating, I believe, off of, off of the media center. Lots of, lots of great playgrounds. We really believe that, I mean, it'll be a great opportunity to take some staff, even though it is a fairly decent trip, to be able to, to see that, get some great ideas. And then we also talked about, sometime in the spring, when Fosteria's project's near complete, really being able to, to take a group of our community members and parents to Fosteria. Maybe start them out at Noble and show them exactly what facilities our students are in and utilizing right now, and take them to Fosteria. The same architect that, that completed this design is working with Fosteria. There's a lot of similarities with the flexible space and some, some of the similarities with the project design, even though it's, it'd be for older students, it would definitely give our community and parents just, just a chance to see what kind of opportunity our students would be able to have with, with, with a project like this. I know Dr. Gase and Dr. Hoida were there, and I'm sure they could add.
Yeah, I think we, their superintendent, I forget his name, but he was very, very helpful, quite, quite a good bit of information he provided us. Interestingly enough, the, they had failed the bond fund seven times prior to his arrival, but the first time he was there passed. And it just so happens, he was a, he was a hometown boy who'd been off in, in other places and came back. So, I think that probably had a lot to do with it. But as you can see, Torazo throughout. And they, they also used like some wainscoting in the hallways, and they had brick pillars, pilasters. It was really very, very well done and, and really a jewel. And so, I think, you know, I think Dr. Hoida's been very vocal about the fact that, you know, when you, when you're looking to build something, you want to build something that's going to look good in the future. And we're not going to be spending money like we will soon, replacing this floor. And so, I'd be interested to see what kind of cost analysis that is, like how much per square foot this costs, you know, you know, and, and the lifespan of this building, how much you could project out, cost of flooring would be if you were replacing it every 15 years or something like that.
I did not go on the trip, but my understanding is they have a lot of community space, specifically on the outside, walking paths, and they invite the community to participate and utilize the grounds, which was a comment I received from, from somebody that I know that lives down there.
One of those striking things was they had a 62... One of those striking things was they had a 62-acre farm right on the edge of town. All around it was residential area. So you had this big 62-acre farm right on the edge of town. So it was rather unique in their part, to purchase something like that. We unfortunately didn't have that luxury, but we still have 82 acres, and we can certainly do something with that space, I'm sure. Yeah. Move the tone up.
The one thing, well, one of the things that I really appreciated on the trip was the picture that we first showed, where to the left, to the right would have been the elementary office, to the right, I'm sorry, the left would have been the middle school office. When you enter, you enter into that foyer, so the doors we were looking at through the picture, you wouldn't have access to the building through those. You're contained, so you have to go to the office that you're going, and you have to be led into the office you're going to, in order to be, for access into the building. And that picture was kind of the center of the building, and in the center of the building was where they had the gymnasium, and on the other end, there was the media center, a lot of public use spaces. And each of the public use spaces, they had parking relatively close to an entrance. So if we had, you know, elderly, or people that can't walk so far, you're not parking at the high school to come to the middle school, you're parking very close to the door. And that's the way the media centers were designed. They said that they have after-hours computer access for the public, which is something that was really cool. I mean, it was just, it was really, it was really eye-opening. I had some ideas on what I wanted to see, but it really blew me away on the way they did it. It was a very well-thought-out project.
The entrance had undercover, there's a roof over top the entrance. The, that was, it was two-lane drop-off, one way. And then in the back, in the rear, was the bus drop-off, and they had diagonal parking for the buses, so there's not, you know, you're not lined up one after another. So it looked like a very efficient way of dropping off and picking up students. And having the extra space, really, we will have that space, so we can really be able to accomplish that, I'm sure. I think they also made the dining area rather spacious, actually. It was nice.
Yeah, very spacious, and we figured that type of space would allow us to operate with a three-lunch, a three-lunch system from that perspective, so it wouldn't be, you know, where our students were getting stretched or having to eat too early, from that point. It was very, very well done, efficient-wise, from that. Amazing stage, it could be used as a flexible space. Gyms were, you know, from a square foot standpoint, I think were tremendous from that. You know, again, everything well-thought-out, from even some of the locker rooms, the restroom, locker room, space for officials. And, you know, it was, it was, it was well-done. And the superintendent, when we asked him what he was disappointed about with the design, he really couldn't, he really couldn't point out anything. He pointed out a couple of perhaps mistakes that they made in choices, but nothing, nothing from a design standpoint. And it, we could see why they wanted us to go see that building, because, again, it was, it's very well-done.
Is it comparable to the footage that we're looking at in terms of our?
A little bit bigger, a little bit bigger. I think it was 240,000 square feet, and ours is just under 200.
But I think you would agree that in our district, at Noble and Washington, we don't have anything comparable to that.
No.
Flexible, the classrooms, the cubbies. We have bags in the hallways, we don't have really lockers for these kids, we don't, we don't have open spaces, we don't have flexible classroom space.
Right. And Mr. Perez, they really thought out auxiliary space for off, just for small group instruction, for social workers?
Yes.
Special education, school resource officers, and the locations of where those particular related services were, were very, very well thought out, so that they would have close access to the students that they served.
I think you'd have a nurse for each side, I think, don't you?
Your district was 1,700, buildings for about 1,700 kids. Yeah.
Well, we'll look forward to, and again, we'll invite the rest of the board as well to make that trip in the fall, and then we'll look at putting a group for the public in the spring. So we felt it was definitely worth the trip, and we're looking forward to continuing our work with the pre-K5 task force.
One other thing, I think when we're down there, we should talk to some of the teachers in the building, to see, because there was a teacher setting up their room when we were there, so I took the privilege to go over and chat with her, ask her if there was anything that they would change. And she said, "Well, we could have used a little deeper here, and a little more here," and, you know, she had some ideas. She said, "Works very well, what they have," she said, "but if we'd have made maybe a little deeper storage space, we could get exactly what they wanted to store in those places." So, and there was the potential to be able to do that in the design of the building, and the wall, and the location of the windows. So, yeah, it's a pretty cool place.
Any comments from the public? Alright. Is there any other board discussion that anyone wants to bring up?
I just had one item. I couldn't help but notice that I had almost $30,000 in donations to the district from parent-teacher organization. I just, I just am constantly amazed at the generosity of the public. There was a $3,000 donation from National Machinery Foundation, another donation from the White Family Foundation, and I just, I'm just, I'm gratified by the support that the community gives this district, in addition to the tax dollars that everybody handies up. That's a tremendous amount of money that's going to very good causes, and I just want to thank those that participate and contribute.
Thank you, Dean. We will be going into executive session to discuss the employment of a public employee, and discuss matters which are subject to pending, or imminent court action.
So moved. Second.
Did I interrupt you getting?
I was gonna actually say there won't be any action taken.
Sorry.
So, for the first time, I was gonna actually mention it. There will be no action taken afterwards. So, we have a motion to go into executive session by Henry, second by Widman. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be August 27, right here at 7:00 PM at Tiff Middle School Capitorium. Full session. Thank you very much. Good evening.